Go ahead, Sessa.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Thursday, September 14, 2023. Commissioners' Court is meeting in special session. Would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
This morning, we're joined by ASL interpreters Stephanie Michelle and Tamara Gastelum. Item number three is public comment. We do not have any speakers signed up for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to participate in public comment? Hearing none, we'll take no action on item number three. We're going to take item number six first. Item number six is receive a presentation regarding the Public Works, Parks and Recreation Department overview and updates.
And Caesar, let me just make a quick announcement. The judge will be getting in. He's tied up on the, I guess, where the governor's coming into town, make that big announcement on Schneider. I don't know if Commissioner Kornau is coming in also a little later?
Yes, sir, he's with the judge.
Okay, so the plan is we'll do number six, four, and three, and hopefully by that time the judge will be back. So go ahead.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners, Veronica Myers, Parks and Recreation Department Director. And with me, I have some of our amazing staff, some of our administrative team that makes things happen every day. With us is Assistant Director Tim Fulton.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Our golf pro, Mike Smith. Our aquatics manager, Nai Holloway.
I like those shirts, those are sharp-looking shirts.
Thank you. And so I want to start by saying that we're one of the public service departments. And so everything we do, we could not do without the support, not only of the court, of our administration, of Betsy and Norma. We're very grateful to them, but of all the other departments, our budget team, we're so happy that they help us. Our HR team came out and helped us this year. Even our admin team, Dr. Madrigal, helped us. I mean, we get a lot of help and we depend on our other departments that support us, county attorneys, constables. I mean, we have a lot of departments that support us, and so we're grateful for them. We're grateful for the Public Works Department, so all of the team that works for the Public Works Department, infrastructure, facilities, and especially the Public Works Engineer, Lydia Arias, that is assigned to park projects. We couldn't do all the things that you're going to see today without their support, and we're very grateful for all that they do. And of course, all of our frontline staff that are out there, weekends, evenings, holidays. We work when people play, we love what we do, so for us, it's not work, it's play. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started with our presentation. Next slide, please. So again, Parks and Recreation is under the umbrella of Public Works, and we're very happy that in this, in the county, the Parks and Recreation Department gets to sit at the table with Public Works, with infrastructure, with planning. And that has helped us, again, just maximize the use of all of our resources. Next slide, please. And the Parks and Recreation Department, again, is under Public Works, and we have six divisions under the Public Works Department that you will hear about later in this presentation. And we would like to start on the next slide, we'd like to start a video, just to give you and the public a synopsis of our department.
El Paso County Parks and Recreation Department provides a safe, healthy, and enjoyable recreation environment for citizens of El Paso.
Miguel, we can't see it. Thank you.
There it is.
El Paso County Parks and Recreation Department provides a safe, healthy, and enjoyable recreation environment for citizens of El Paso County. By providing a rich mix of cultural, recreational, and social opportunities, citizens of El Paso County and their visitors can enjoy enhanced quality of life. This department falls under the Public Works Division.
The county of El Paso is committed to providing great parks for everyone. This is the theme of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan that was newly adopted by the court in fiscal year 2022. The plan identifies the investment needs of the department as well as many opportunities to ensure it meets the professional philosophy of promoting health and wellness, social equity, and conservation. Additionally, it provides a vision to increase tourism and economic development with the renovation of three regional parks, Ascarate, Gallegos, and the Sports Park, to include the new San Felipe Ave Vehículo Destination Park.
The core functions of the department are divided into six individual divisions. Administration, that includes Ascarate the Park Operations, Aquatics, Golf Course, Park Maintenance, Special Events, Sports Park. The Administration Department provides a wide range of services to the public as well as support services for the other divisions. This includes the daily operations of the department, grant writing management, CIP and bond projects, contract management, HR processing, and budget management. Externally, services to the community include pavilion, picnic shelter, field and pool rentals, toll booth operations, and food and other vendor contracts.
Our priority for the Administration Office and customer satisfaction while ensuring transparent operations that have led to satisfactory financial audits, successful grant awards, donations, and increased collaboration and engagement.
Our team has currently been working on streamlining some of our processes to expedite and execute vendor and special event contracts in a more systematic and efficient manner to meet deadlines. A tracking system to measure turnaround time is being created to ensure timely and excellent customer service for all vendors.
The Aquatics Division oversees three swimming pools across the county. The aquatic centers feature water slides, lap swimming, diving boards, and morgue. With one of the few Olympic-sized pools in the county, Ascarate the Park Aquatic Center is the destination for swim teams, competitive swim events, and just summer fun with family and friends.
Our Aquatics Safety Team focuses on enhancing the community's overall swimming experience by providing a safe, healthy, and fun, family-friendly environment suitable for all ages and abilities, as well as providing first responder care in the event of any aquatic emergency within our facilities.
Our goal is to increase aquatics programming at county aquatic facilities by providing swim lessons, water safety courses, and special events by at least 5% each year. Another goal is to increase community participation at all county aquatic facilities by 5% every year.
The Ascarate the Golf Course features 27 holes on 176 acres, featuring an executive main eighteen-hole course and a Delta IX short hole course, perfect for individuals who need to golf. Golf course amenities include a lighted practice facility and driving range, putting greens, chipping greens, practice bunker, and a clubhouse with a pro shop and cafe, all located in central El Paso.
Ascarate the Golf Course is home to the First Tee, a family-friendly and learning golf course, and the best value in town. Our driving range is open until 10:00 p.m. on Friday nights. The golf course is in super shape, come on down and join us.
Over the past four years, our team has been focusing on beautifying the golf course with native landscaping, replacement of all shade chemicals, overseeding, weed control, cart path improvements, replacement of driving rate bedding, and new pro shop furniture to increase participation and a great golfing experience. Another priority has been to work on making the golf course sustainable by generating revenue or at least reaching a breakeven point. Though very challenging, a plan was initiated with the collaboration of the Master Plan. Through the input of the plan and our diligent staff, we have identified and initiated two goals that will reduce expenditures and increase our revenues here at the golf course. The team identified the largest expense to be the water bill. The goal is to cut water use in half. Another major goal identified was to reevaluate our fee structure and what other area golf courses were charging compared to Ascarate the Golf Course. We have a fee structure in the works that will be able to get us to the breakeven point or possibly even generate some revenue. The quality, appearance, and maintenance of the park system contributes to the image of the community and the perception of its livability. The Maintenance Division provides routine maintenance to a 400-acre park with 50 acres of lakes, 12 county parks, a 27-hole golf course, three aquatics facilities, a 10-field sports park, and assists in special events and maintenance.
Our highly experienced and skilled maintenance team provides routine maintenance and monthly facilities inspections to ensure safe and well-maintained parks, recreation, and sports facilities.
Our team has been working on some in-house projects like irrigation and landscaping at the festival area of Hummer Garden, repairing rock walls around the parks and adding decorative rock to restrooms, replacing lights in all parks, adding drip irrigation for windy trees, removing unsafe skate park equipment, and replacing amenities such as benches, picnic tables, grills, trash cans, and pet waste stations.
Our recent goal is to add park signs with name and county seal to all county parks. Another goal this year is to convert one of the tennis courts at Ascarate into four dedicated pickleball courts due to the increased demand.
Lastly, two pickleball courts will be completed this year with painted surfacing and portable fencing.
The Special Events Division provides special events all over the county and recently included setup and breakdown for all county special events.
12 special events are held by El Paso P A R D. These events range from large events like
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Veronica Myers, Parks and Recreation Department Director. And with me, I have some of our amazing staff, some of our administrative team that makes things happen every day. With us is Assistant Director Tim Fulton.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Our golf pro, Mike Smith. Our aquatics manager, Nai Holloway.
I like those shirts. Those are sharp-looking shirts.
Thank you. And so, I want to start by saying that we're one of the public service departments. And so, everything we do, we could not do without the support, not only of the court, of our administration, of Betsy and Norma, we're very grateful to them, but of all the other departments, our budget team, we're so happy that they help us. Our HR team came out and helped us this year. Even our admin team, Dr. Madrigal, helped us. I mean, we get a lot of help and we depend on our other departments that support us, county attorneys, constables. I mean, we have a lot of departments that support us, and so, we're grateful for them. We're grateful for the Public Works Department. So, all of the team that works for the Public Works Department, infrastructure, facilities, and especially our, the Public Works Engineer, Lydia Arias, that is assigned to park projects. We couldn't do all the things that you're going to see today without their, without their support, and we're very grateful for all that they do. And of course, all of our frontline staff that are out there, weekends, evenings, holidays. We work when people play. We love what we do. So, for us, it's not work, it's play. So, with that, we'll go ahead and get started with the present, with our presentation. Next slide, please. So, again, Parks and Recreation is under the umbrella of Public Works, and we're very happy that in this, in the county, the Parks and Recreation Department gets to sit at the table with Public Works, with infrastructure, with planning. And that has helped us, again, in just maximize the use of all of our resources. Next slide, please. And the Parks and Recreation Department, again, is under Public Works, and we have six divisions under the Public Works Department that you will hear about later in this presentation. And we would like to start, on the next slide, we would like to start a video, just to give you, you and the public, a synopsis of our department.
El Paso County Parks and Recreation Department provides a safe, healthy, and enjoyable recreation environment for citizens of El Paso.
Miguel, we can't see it. Thank you.
There it is.
El Paso County Parks and Recreation Department provides a safe, healthy, and enjoyable recreation environment for citizens of El Paso County. By providing a rich mix of cultural, recreational, and social opportunities, citizens of El Paso County and their visitors can enjoy enhanced quality of life. This department falls under the Public Works Division.
The county of El Paso is committed to providing great parks for everyone. This is the theme of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan that was newly adopted by the court in fiscal year 2022. The plan identifies the investment needs of the department, as well as many opportunities to ensure it meets the professional philosophy of promoting health and wellness, social equity, and conservation. Additionally, it provides a vision to increase tourism and economic development with the renovation of three regional parks, Ascarate, Gallegos, and the Sports Park, to include the new San Felipe Highway Vehicle Destination Park.
The core functions of the department are divided into six individual divisions. Administration, that includes Ascarate Park Operations, Aquatics, Golf Course, Park Maintenance, Special Events, Sports Park. The Administration Department provides a wide range of services to the public, as well as support services for the other divisions. This includes the daily operations of the department, grant writing management, CIP and bond projects, contract management, HR processing, and budget management. Externally, services to the community include pavilion, picnic shelter, field and pool rentals, toll booth operations, and food and other vendor contracts.
Our priority for the Administration, Office, and Customer Satisfaction, while ensuring transparent operations that have led to satisfactory financial audits, successful grant awards, donations, and increased collaboration and engagement.
Our team has currently been working on streamlining some of our processes to expedite and execute vendor and special event contracts in a more systematic and efficient manner to meet deadlines. A tracking system to measure turnaround time is being created to ensure timely and excellent customer service for all renters. The Aquatics Division oversees three swimming pools across the county. The aquatic centers feature water slides, lap swimming, diving boards, and morgue. With one of the few Olympic-sized pools in the county, Ascarate the Park Aquatic Center is the destination for swim teams' competitive swim events and just summer fun with family and friends.
Our aquatics safety team focuses on enhancing the community's overall swimming experience by providing a safe, healthy, and fun, family-friendly environment, suitable for all ages and abilities, as well as providing first responder care in the event of any aquatic emergency within our facilities.
Our goal is to increase aquatics programming at county aquatic facilities by providing swim lessons, water safety courses, and special events by at least 5% each year. Another goal is to increase community participation at all county aquatic facilities by 5% every year. The Ascarate the Golf Course features 27 holes on 176 acres, featuring an executive main 18-hole course and a Delta 9 short hole course, perfect for individuals who need to golf. Golf course amenities include a lighted practice facility and driving range, putting greens, chipping greens, practice bunker, and a clubhouse with a pro shop and cafe, all located in central El Paso.
Ascarate the Golf Course is home to the First Tee, a family-friendly and learning golf course, and the best value in town. Our driving range is open until 10:00 PM on Friday nights. The golf course is in super shape. Come on down and join us.
Over the past four years, our team has been focusing on beautifying the golf course with native landscaping, replacement of all shade chemicals, overseeding, weed control, cart path improvements, replacement of driving rate maintenance, and new pro shop furniture to increase participation and a great golfing experience. Another priority has been to work on making the golf course sustainable by generating revenue or at least reaching a break-even point. Though very challenging, a plan was initiated with the collaboration of the Master Plan. Through the input of the plan and our diligent staff, we have identified and initiated two goals that will reduce expenditures and increase our revenues here at the golf course. The team identified the largest expense to be the water bill. The goal is to cut water use in half. Another major goal identified was to reevaluate our fee structure and what other area golf courses were charging compared to Ascarate the Golf Course. We have a fee structure in the works that will be able to get us to the break-even point or possibly even generate some revenue. The quality, appearance, and maintenance of the park system contributes to the image of the community and the perception of its livability. The maintenance division provides routine maintenance to a 400-acre park with 50 acres of lakes, 12 county parks, a 27-hole golf course, three aquatics facilities, a 10-field sports park, and assists in special events and maintenance.
Our highly experienced and skilled maintenance team provides routine maintenance and monthly facilities inspections to ensure safe and well-maintained parks, recreation, and sports facilities.
Our team has been working on some in-house projects like irrigation and landscaping of the festival area to human garden, repairing rock walls around the parks and adding decorative rock to restrooms, replacing lights in all parks, adding drip irrigation for windy trees, removing unsafe skate park equipment, and replacing amenities such as benches, picnic tables, grills, trash cans, and pet waste stations. Our recent goal is to add park signs with name and county seal to all county parks. Another goal this year is to convert one of the tennis courts at Ascarate into four dedicated pickleball courts due to the increased demand. Lastly, two pickleball courts will be completed this year with painted surfacing and portable fencing. The Special Events Division provides special events all over the county and recently included setup and breakdown for all county special events. 12 special events are held by El Paso PARD. These events range from large events like the Fourth of July fireworks and the county fair to age-specific activities. When combined with special events held by outside organizations, there were 58 events held at El Paso County Parks in 2019, attracting over 77,000 guests.
The operations specialist team and myself are constantly seeking out organizers to provide them with venue options and quotes to encourage them to host their events at county parks, especially at our newly renovated and landscaped festival area at Ascarate the Park.
The Master Plan identified special events as the number-one program the community desired most, based on a statistically valid survey. Therefore, we are working on increasing the number of special events hosted and community events offered by 10% every year. The Sports Park is the premier location for diamond sports in the region for more than two decades. The El Paso County Sports Park is a 45-acre sports complex that provides competitive play for a variety of age groups and tournament facility for all ages, youth, and adult sports. It is home to state-of-the-art Tier One fields. The Sports Park has two quick-service concession stands and a full-service restaurant on the upper level where spectators can watch games in comfort, and batting cages for players to warm up. All 10 fields are lighted and meet the needs of all age groups.
Our priority at the El Paso County Sports Park Complex is to provide the best-quality programming and continue to be the most competitive baseball location in the region year-round.
Our goal is to improve sports programming participation in all age groups by 10% every year. Another goal is to increase the number of tournament rentals by 5% every year.
Mission, again, health and wellness, conservation, and social equity to serve all of our community. And again, we're a quality-of-life department. Next slide, please. We oversee, we have, operate an $8.8 million budget. We oversee 832 acres of parkland with at least another 10 acres coming online this next year, FY '24. We have 12 parks, two hike-and-bike trails, three swimming pools, one of them is the 50-meter pool you heard about at Ascarate the Park, a golf course, which is, has an executive 18-hole course and a Delta 9 course, and our Sports Park, our state-of-the-art facility, sports facility here in town. Next slide, please. And some of the accomplishments, again, that we've accomplished in our department this year, and again, with the help of everyone, all of our other departments and staff, and to include our fleet services as well, that keeps all of our equipment operating every day. We have our, we opened up the first dedicated pickleball courts in FY '23. We had the ribbon cutting for Gallegos and Rising to All Abilities Playgrounds, and we had the Holiday Lights collaboration with the Fred Loyer Partners. And we awarded, we were awarded $1.5 million from Texas Parks and Wildlife Department for Horizon View Park Phase 1, otherwise known as Milagro Park by one of the young teenagers that was at a meeting. And I said, "We should start thinking about a park name that would be inclusive of everyone." And she said, "Could we call it Milagro Park because it's a miracle to us that have been waiting over 25 years for this park?" So, I hope that we can make that happen for them. And then, we have two new multi-purpose courts at Ascarate. It's a pickleball and footsal. We opened those up this year. The county was awarded for the project, the All Abilities Playground projects, for a National Association of Counties Award and an International City and County Management Association Award, which Betsy will bring home for us in October. And we have a design completion of three skate parks at Awadulce, Estrella, and Gallegos, which will be going out to bid in October. And we have, we also finished the Master Plan, which is not here, the Master Plan for the San Felipe Highway Vehicle Park. We were also selected by the National Association of State Outdoor Recreation Liaison Officers that manages the Land and Water Conservation Fund to speak at our National Recreation Park Association Conference with them, which I will do next month. So, we're grateful for all of those things. Next slide, please, and I'll pass it on to Tim Fulton, our Assistant Director.
Good morning. Want to talk briefly here about some of our Master Plan projects that are moving forward. And I know most of y'all really anticipated these, wanted to see when they're going to be taking place. So, Square Dance Linear Park, that's in the works to begin. Ascarate the Lake renovation and the dredging project. I know Commissioner Stout met with us the other day. So, that's something anybody who's in the park in Ascarate the Park is asking about because we do expect that to make significant changes, improvements to the park and to the fishing. The Ascarate the Park entrance, and again, this is to alleviate some of the congestion. If you were at the Brightside event a couple of weekends ago, you would have noticed how the roundabout does a great job at slowing traffic down, but when we have a large event, it sometimes interferes with the cars coming in and the cars leaving. The Ascarate the Park Island, the improvements that will be happening there. And of course, the festival area, Phase 2 and 3, and again, this is becoming more and more popular. Next slide, please.
Before you leave that one, may I ask you something? On the Square Dance Linear Park, when do you estimate that we might be able to break ground?
Attended a meeting for a conceptual. We are coordinating with your office, the community meetings in the, for the upcoming months, October, November. We're planning on doing two community meetings, and then, the design will be completed and it should go out to construction, I mean, out to bid for construction in the, in the spring.
After the input from the public?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We're coordinating that with your office right now.
Thank you.
One of the things I want to cover real quickly, though, are special events because in the Master Plan, as you, as you know, the demand for more special events, particularly those that are attractive to families, is on the increase, and doing those with partnerships is one of our big goals in this upcoming year. And of course, last year, and I'll talk about some of the events we had. I'm also, because Lupe could not be here, I'll touch on this if that's good with you, Veronica. So, our toll booth and rentals, we had an audit. It was 100% satisfactory, which is great because the number of cars that come in on holiday weekends on our special events is, is pretty mind-blowing, and I'm always impressed with the staff that Lupe has out there, and what a great job they do. So, our field rentals, we've seen a decrease in Ascarate, a slight decrease there. And Gallegos, we also had a decrease in the field rentals. I don't know the exact reasons for those. One of the things that we can speculate on is maybe the heat. Also, we've also had a significant increase in special events. Likewise, with the picnic shelters, we have seen a decrease in those as well. And again, I don't know the exact reasons for those, but we will, we'll learn a little bit more come close, the close of the year. Pavilion rentals, we, same thing, we've had a decrease there. And then, the toll booth, of course, we've had a decrease due to some policy changes. So, we have seen a moderate decrease there. Next slide. And I'm going to turn this over to Nai. She's going to talk about our swimming program.
So, part of my accomplishments were personal development, which was to attend the Association of Aquatic Professional Enormal Director School, and which I obtained my certification as an aquatics manager. Also obtained the algae prevention and eradication certification. Thank you. Renewed my lifeguard instructor certification. We switched from liquid chlorine to tablets. And during our open swim visits this summer, we did have quite, similar to last year attendance. Ascarate had 10,416 attendance, Fabens 2,103, Canutio 2,409. Our pool rentals did increase by 30% overall, and tent rentals as well increased 40%. And at the beginning of our season, we also had our water safety prevention awareness event, which we also joined with Drowning Prevention of El Paso, and we also had a significant increase. We had an increase from nine participants up to about 40-plus. And that is it. Next slide, please. We also purchased our new lifeguard stations for our aquatic facility, and then now, Tim, we'll talk about the partnership we had with the YMCA.
Sorry, Nai. So, as, as you know, we entered a partnership with the YMCA, and one of the hopes we were having with that partnership was to make the number of lifeguards that were required for our pools a little easier to do. Across the country, cities, counties have had challenges recruiting and hiring lifeguards. So, that part of the contract worked very well. We were able to keep the pools open. I will admit, we had some mechanical issues, as Commissioner Hogan smiles and is well aware of, and I think our staff did react very well with that. And frankly, the partnership with the YMCA, great people. It was nice to be able to handle the rentals and those open swims and special events with their help. We will be reporting back to the commission about, you know, the, the things we saw with this contract, things maybe going ahead that we might tweak differently, and we will have our partners from the YMCA present at that presentation. Next slide. And I'll turn it over to Mike Smith.
Hello. How are you doing?
Good morning.
Good. So, we had good numbers at the golf course this year. We've, we had a record-high tournaments of 101. We've done rounds of golf of 52,969. That's as of, to date, through August. So, we might hit 55,000, which is super busy for a golf course, and lucky we have 27 holes. So, a lot of times, we, when we have a tournament, we can send them over to the Delta 9 to play, which they don't have to then, you know, because we have a lot of walk-ins and when they, we don't have to send them away, which is wonderful. So, the golf course revenue was up by 11%. So, to break that down is, in '21, '22, we did $1,375, and then, this year, we're at $1,538. Now, we did raise the rates 40%, you know, because we were well under not doing a recovery of break-even, and that's our goal, to get to break-even for this golf course. Really, you would want to break even at it. Lessened revenue is up by 17%. You know, with COVID hit, you know, golf courses and people playing golf skyrocketed, you know? So, it's up about golf at 20% to 30% at most places, so. And our golf range revenue is up by 10%. I think that has a lot to do with, you know, our Friday night and Saturday night lights that we stay open on the weekends now. Through September, we added a month. We said, "Well, we're having people there, so let's keep it up." September was awfully hot, July and August. So, those are good numbers there. So, if we, if we can, hopefully, that's a harbinger to what's coming in the future for us, so. Okay, next slide. Okay, so, the programs, we, we got started with the PGA Hope. That was a, a great program that we do, and we're, we're starting again. We're going to run the second one, September 28th it starts. That's a program done through the PGA, and that's paid for through, through the PGA and the Sun Country PGA, and, and we're the only golf course in town that runs a PGA Hope. And what it is, is, is veterans, mostly disabled of some sort, they don't have to be disabled, but they need to be a veteran, will come down and they sign up through the national office. We don't even need to sign them up. They get it signed up before, once I set the dates, they send, "Okay, these people are, are going to come down." And they, they usually want one golf pro per six veterans, so I accepted eight, and I think I had 10 show up, which was fine, you know? So, and, and then, we did, well, G-Cubed or Gals Gone Golfin', we did two sessions this summer. The first session had 21 ladies, and then, the next one, we had, we did another one that had 10. So, that was, that was good. That ran off five Friday nights of June, and then, four times in August and July. Then, we're doing the Friday Night Lights, Under the Lights, held every Friday and Saturday night. So, that's, those pictures there, if you see those, those are the veterans, the, the last day that we did. And then, the next one is a picture, the middle picture is a picture of Friday Night Lights. That's pretty busy. It's a Friday night, about eight, probably about 8:30 at night. And then, the other picture on the right is the 21 ladies that came to the Gals Gone Golfin'. So, that's been a pretty big hit for, for us down there at the golf course, so. All right. Okay, so, some of the things we did, let me, let me add also with programs before. So, we, we've also got UTEP back on board. UTEP during COVID or right before COVID decided, they weren't getting a lot of students into their P3 program. It's kind of their outreach programs, but I've been teaching them, you know, for many years. I think we started in '94 with them. So, I've got them back on board. They're going to be starting this fall with us, so that'll be something nice to do. Another thing that, that's been a big help, I think, at the golf course is that lighted sign on 375. You know, that's, that's a pretty nice, that's a really nice sign, you know, and, and people see it and, and kind of gets people's attention, hopefully, for not very long while they're driving, but it's a, it's a great sign to have out there. I think that's really helped. Another thing that's helped at the golf course is the parking fee discount for the golfers during our events, so that, you know, they'll pay $10 to get into the park, and we're able to give them that discount now at the golf course. I think that's been a, a wonderful thing to, to eliminate a lot of complaints at the golf course, you know, because they would pay $10 and have to pay to play at the golf course. Getting that discount has, has quomed a lot of complaints from the golfers. I want to thank you for, for the golfers and myself for having to do that. So, and then, another thing that, that, that I'm doing, as well as selected to be the Sun Country PGA Teaching and Coaching Chairperson, so that kind of keeps me abreast of what's going on in our section, and, and then, as well as, as getting, I do some videos and stuff that are sent out to the Sun Country Amateur Golf Association, as well as the, the PGA pros in our section. So, that's, that's kind of cool. It's something I hadn't done in the past, had never been on the education or the board of it, so now, I'm on the board. So, let's go to some of the improvements. So, we did the-
Let me ask you, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Sure.
You added silver tees.
Yeah.
I'm not a golfer, but what does that mean?
Okay, so, the silver tees are for super seniors or raw beginners, juniors. They're way up, they're, they're, they're like-
Closer.
-200 yards from the green, or 100 yards, or 75 yards. So, when I was putting them out, I was kind of thinking about my mom, you know? She still plays golf, and she'll be 80 this November, and, you know, if she hits the ball 125 yards, it's like, you know, she's doing a jumping jack, you know? So, but in golf, so many times, the holes are 400 yards down there, you know? And I've always played with, you know, all kinds of people and a lot of, a lot of older folks, and, you know, to have tees that are up allows them to then hit a club into the green like they used to be able to 40 years ago.
Okay.
You know, so, it's, it, we have some people that play those, some of the super seniors, you know, and if you're like over 80, you can play the silver tees in the tournaments, which is a good thing, you know? I mean, it, it makes golf fun, rather than somebody out there where the hole's down there and they can only hit it 125 yards, and they got to do that four times till they get around the green. So, that, that, that's why those are added, and a lot of golf courses have gone to that. One of the things that we're going to end up doing with the silver tees is actually putting like silver little plaques in the ground, so when the maintenance crew goes through there, they don't have to move the markers, you know, get off the mower and move them. We'll just put plaques in the ground, and that's what, that'll help. But that's what we added that for. All right, next slide. Okay, so, what we did there is we leveled, on the slide on the right is- Okay, so what we did there is we leveled, on the slide on the right is the tee box on number three. So, some of the tee boxes have, we've gone, you know, pick one out or two out, a winner, and go in and level them. Because when you tee off at a golf course, you want the tee pretty level. You don't like to have an unlevel lie to start the hole normally. And then we've been doing some sod. That was fairway number six. And then also, has been a good deal is getting sod from the Southwest University Park or the locomotives over there. So, we get sod from them, and we can use that. We've started, started like a sod, a sod farm on the golf course. Okay, next slide? And then we've planted some trees. Now, these, these trees were also helped by the Lions Club when we did that. When we put, I think they donated forty trees. So, the golf course is, you know, sometimes you play out here, they have what they call desert or link-style golf course. And that's really not what Escarate was, was built on. It's, it's a tree-lined golf course. So, if you look there, we're trying to put a bunch of trees in to make the golf course, you know, more appealing to the eye and focus in on, on the holes. So, if you have trees, you can kind of see exactly where the fairways and things. So, we want to, we want to keep that program up, as many trees as we can get on that golf course, because you have trees die, and they provide shade and, you know, and help the environment. So, we're always having a tree planting session going on, hopefully, in the future as well. Next? Okay, so this is for the sports park. Ms. Myers, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
We're a little bit passionate about what we do. And so, for our sports park and Claudia Fernandez, our league manager, has been doing a great job over there, as you can see. We've increased tremendously. I mean, when we talk about all the people that we serve, day in and day out, thousands of people every day. And again, I just can't thank all of our support departments that help us to ensure this, that this happens. We have the best state-of-the-art sports facility in town. And so, we've seen an increase in all of our seasons, but especially our winter season. That was a seventy percent increase. And with the minimal increase that we did at the, at the gate for tournaments, we had a fifty percent, fifty-seven percent increase. So, our staff does a, does a wonderful job out there of handling the tournaments. We have a lot of tournaments. We're getting to the point where we will probably not be able to play our leagues on weekends, just from so many tournaments. And so, we're working with the Sports Commission and with Melissa's help. We're closer with the Sports Commission to bring in some more. And as a matter of fact, just this week, had a conversation with Omar at the Sports Commission, so that we can bring in some more out-of-town teams and some more out-of-town tournaments to El Paso. Everybody that comes here loves it, loves it. The Triple Crown that came in was, they fell in love with the, with the facilities. And we had, we really make a difference in our community. We had one of the tournaments that came into, not one of the tournaments, but one of the events that we had brought in coaches, you know, scouts, and brought in our softball players, our girls, to be able to get college scholarships. So, that is really important to us and the things that we do. And we, we are working with the sport, and in the sports park, we're working to grow it. So, we have some more recreational and developmental types of programs happening during the day, during the week, and provide, again, just maximize the use of our facility, but not just our, our operations team, but our maintenance team there, that is dedicated there under Ben's direction, Edgar Mesa. Amazing, very, pay attention to detail. It's immaculate when we go out there. They're doing a fantastic job of maintaining the, the sports park. Next slide, please. And our, our maintenance division, which again is underseen, overseen by Ben Vias, our park maintenance manager, that team really just does a lot of the work, a lot of the projects that we put in motion. They installed the three canopies at the River Park Trail. They oversaw our pickleball courts contract. We had two tree plantings this year. This past year, we did one with the Camino Real Rotary Club, and then one with Eco El Paso. So, we're real excited that we're planting more trees at Escarate and other parks that will be coming up. And Tim will talk a little bit more about that. Next slide, please. We added a new roof at the maintenance shop. We installed the sky beams at the Healing Garden, implemented zone management at Escarate Park. We sowed it the new areas and created a new sod farm with the locomotive's donation. We added new landscaping and ADA sidewalks to festival and area and multiple-purpose courts. So, they did the additional work on that. Next slide, please.
Veronica, I'm sorry, before you move on. What does the implemented zone management mean? What exactly is that?
That is assigning staff specifically to certain areas of the park.
Okay.
Next slide, please. We are doing the renovation of San Eli Placita. And again, these are, a lot of these, including this one, is a master plan project recommendation. So, we're doing that. They finished the, adding the St. Augustine grass. That was in your weekly highlight. And they've done the repairs to the gazebo and the paint, they're starting the painting on it. And it'll be done by next week. It should be completed. So, we're excited about that. And this team also did all the site prep, landscaping and sidewalk installation for Gallegos and Rising to All Abilities Playgrounds. So, whatever our, some of our grants don't cover, our maintenance division helps out with, along with our Public Works engineers. Next slide, please. And I'll hand it over to Tim Fulton.
Sure. In addition to the increases we see at the golf course and the sports park, of course, our special events, we had over sixty events in 2023. We saw an increase in the food truck revenue and correlation there with the special events. The estimated attendance for all these events is a little over a hundred-and-twenty thousand. And some of the events that really, I think, attracted large numbers from throughout El Paso County were the holiday lights on the lake. And it was the first year we did that. And again, we're looking forward going into 2023, 2024, again, with that event. We did, as Veronica mentioned, we did an Earth Day celebration and tree planting with our partners at Eco El Paso. You know, the big goal is increase the canopy coverage, the shade in all of our parks. Another large event, it was a month-long, and it corresponded with the Easter holiday, was the Big Fair. It kept our weekends and during the week busy, a family event. We also, with the partnership with the Sports Commission, attracted the Texas Police Games, which was a huge success. And I know just a few weeks back, the Sports Commission had a nice presentation about the success of that event. And again, this year, with our Fourth of July celebration, another big, successful event, in spite of the very warm weather we were having. And then the last large event that we had, that I think, at least I had the experience of working this event throughout the weekend, and really came to appreciate our special events staff and the work they put in. Because leaving, leaving the park at four AM, I'll tell you, it's, it's a fun job. But you see the work that goes into these events that are there for our community to have a great time. Next slide, please. And just some slides of, you know, the events that take place throughout, even our partners with the fishing club. I love that they reach out. Many of these individuals are retired. They reach out to our youth, they get our youth involved in the outdoors through fishing. And not only is it good recreation, it's also educational, just a great group of folks. Also, you see the photo of our movies in the park, another popular event that is a traveling event. We try to move that to different events throughout, different locations throughout the county. We expect to see more events in the upcoming year. Thank you.
And we always come carrying gifts and something to motivate you and inspire you to use your parks. So, we brought you pickleball paddles, because you all were the first to have dedicated pickleball courts in El Paso.
All right.
Are you going to give us lessons, though? I don't know how to play pickleball.
Can we set up a pickleball court here at the courthouse?
Done.
Commissioners, any questions?
I'll make sure to get them, thank you.
I've got a quick, a couple of questions. You know, as I've gone through the park at Escarate, I've noticed that some of the picnic shelters are, they're okay, but they're not attractive. Is there any consideration in changing the aluminum to maybe some canopies?
There is. So, if you see on top of the lake, this project started many years ago, where they started doing the very nice concrete picnic shelters, big, very nice. Those are the most popular ones, right, that everybody likes, and plus they're by the lake. So, we are working, as part of the master plan, it does say for us to renovate those picnic shelters.
And they're nice, but as compared to canopies, and you've got them at the golf course, they really stand out. The, the parking at the sports park, remember how, I don't know if it's still dirt in the middle? Is it still, see, are we, are we thinking about paving that? And I understand that there was a lot of damage to the batting cages because of the dirt that gets into the mechanism.
Yes, so that's one of our CO projects, one of our certificate of obligation projects that we're working on. And we're working right now with our Public Works engineers to really iron out the scope and work with our, with our consultants to, for the design. So, that one is one of the certificate of obligations.
Oh, great, because that is a huge area that really would help keep the dirt down.
Yes.
And people, you know-
It would really help us maintain this.
And any word on electric charging at Escarate and other locations?
We have the electric charging stations right now at Escarate. As a matter of fact, there's a ribbon-
There's two, right?
-cutting ceremony later this month for those. They're at Escarate Park.
You already have them?
In the golf course parking.
Are they level three chargers or level two?
Level two.
Level two? Okay.
Norma can speak to that, but-
Good morning, Commissioners. Norma Rivera Palacios with the Public Works Department. They're level two, and it was through a grant by El Paso Electric that donated two of them. We're continuing to work with them and hoping that we could get additional ones, that we could play, that we can place at other county facilities. But at this point, it's only one at Escarate Park, and then there's one at the Coliseum. We gave them different options on all their facilities, and they decided on those two. But we'll continue to push forward on these.
Hopefully, we can get them here in the parking area.
It was a recommendation, Commissioner. We did recommend that they bring them here at the MDR. And unfortunately, they gave us two to start, but we will continue to work with them.
And it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Norma, but those run about eighty to a hundred thousand dollars each at the Schedule II.
And I think eventually, those will pay for themselves because of the traffic you'll get in there, for two reasons. Number one, they pay for, for the charge. And number two, they may go into the restaurant and eat while they're, they're charging, a lot of things like that. I've, I've got an electric car, and that's what I look for, those, those types of, they're kind of a luxury for me to be able to plug in where I'm at.
Yeah, we will continue to look for additional grants. This was funded through a grant.
Okay, great, thank you. And one last question, Veronica. The, at Escarate, you've got, I go through there every day on the border highway. Past the sign, there's an area, I guess, where you keep stumps and refuse, just piles of dirt. Is there any kind of plan to enclose it or clean it up?
That used to be the old tree farm.
Yeah, that used to be the old tree farm. Tim, you want to speak to?
Sure. Like Mike was saying, that used to be the old tree farm, and that's something we want to revisit, the possibility of buying trees that are smaller, growing them there, and then, you know, whether it's, we plant them in the golf course permanently or other parks, that would be our goal. So, that's hopefully something we start this winter. It's something we could do in-house. And again, with our partners like Eco El Paso, the Rotary Club, who can purchase small trees. And again, we don't have a formal agreement to do this, but I think it's something people are very interested in doing, and it, it makes great sense to grow, you know, trees on-site there.
And for some reason, that's where I noticed, it seems like hundreds of geese in that area. I don't know if they're someplace else also, but I mean, I mean, all over the place in that area.
Commissioner, back to your, also your first question about enclosing it. I'm, I think what we're asking is there's something that can be done, because I've noticed it too. I think I've mentioned it. It looks, it doesn't look good. And so, if we were talking about the same area, it's, I mean, like, there's like fallen dead limbs in that area, piles, yeah. So, if there's something we could do from a curb appearance?
We will address that. Back and look at it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Veronica, for the presentation, and to all of our park staff for the amazing work that they do. I just had a question about maybe something that we could do to try to keep the public more informed of just the, all of the great things that are coming to our parks. So, you mentioned Milagro Park in, outside of Horizon. And so, last year, I want to say it was August of last year, Public Works, when the land was finally deeded to the county so that we could construct the park, Public Works went out there and cleaned out all of the brush and the trash, and the space is now beautiful and ready for that park. And then, of course, you applied for the one-point-five-million-dollar grant from Texas Parks and Wildlife. And, but I'm just wondering, is there something that we could do, a sign, some kind of sign that we could put up when we have, like, also at San Felipe, we have these projects in the works, we've received funding from Texas Parks and Wildlife, but something that gives the community a little bit of a timeline? Because, like, for example, at Milagro Park, Public Works cleared out the land in August. So, now we're already in September, a year later. So, my office does get calls about, well, what's happening? Did the park not get built? Because people just don't, and we all know, especially when it's a question of receiving grants from the state, all of those things take time. And the design process, and, you know, all of that takes time. But from the public's perspective, right, we tell them, great news, we got funding for a park. And then a year happens, and they kind of don't see anything. I think they, they start getting a little bit discouraged again. So, I'm just wondering if when we have, when we've been awarded funds and we are actively working, we know these parks are going to get built, can we put signage up where it has a very, maybe, you know, kind of generic deadline, just to give people an idea? Because, you know, the public, I think, sometimes thinks that we can build a park from one day to the next, and we know that we can't. We know that it's going to take time, and they'll understand that too. But I'm just wondering if we can put up signage, just to let people know, this is coming, this is coming, this is happening, and this is kind of a rough timeline of what to expect.
Okay. We'll work with your office on that, on that time, because we do, we, this is a grant, so we do have to put up a temporary sign, and then we'll put up a permanent sign.
Okay.
We'll work with your office on that. And I did get a call last week and give, gave an update to them as well. But we, and, and we've already met with the consultants, our initial meeting-
Great.
-already, since we became owners of the land two weeks ago, I think, or something. We got the, about a month ago, we got-
We closed on the donation.
We just closed on that.
Good, good.
The donation. So, so now we're, we're moving forward.
Good, good.
And, and so, we're going to be reaching out to your office to coordinate, because we, the number of meetings needs to be as part of the contract.
Great. So, do you know when the community meetings will start happening, the community engagement meetings?
They'll be coming up this fall, so we're-
This fall?
Yes, we're going to be calling your office, yes.
Great, 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 wonderful, wonderful.
Yes, in the next week or two, we're going to be calling, within a month, we're going to be-
Wonderful.
-coordinating.
And I think it would also be great for San Felipe if we have some kind of signage, just to let people know. I think we did have something at the All Abilities Park in, in Rising, or I think there was some kind of signage.
And San Felipe has the sign too.
Okay, good.
No, San Felipe has the sign. Remember the groundbreaking ceremony? We put it up that day.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, in October of last year.
Wonderful, wonderful.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
Veronica, thank you, thank your staff, great presentation. And, you know, it just seems like- seems like I was at Escarate, and matter of fact, I ran into you when you all were planting trees maybe a year or so ago, so, and it looks like it makes a difference. So thank you, great presentation.
Thank you all for your support. We could not do it without the court's support, without our administration's support. It's a lot of work, we love what we do, and we're working with our, we're working with our admin team, actually, just getting, defining, you know, what we're doing, where we're going in master plan, and what are we knocking off the master plan, taking it off, because again, for us, it's a living document, it's not sitting on our shelf, we are working it, working it, every day with grants. You know, some of the other grants that we have in motion are taking care of some of the deficiencies that are, that our master plan identified in some of our parks, our multi-sport courts, like the ones at Westway and Gallegos and Estrella and skate parks, and our playgrounds, the playground at Sparks, the playground at Westway, those are the next ones. And so those other grants are taking care of some of those deficiencies that were obtained in our, identified in our master plan. So we're definitely working, but it takes all of us, our infrastructure team, you know, Ferny and his team, they come out and they help us when we're in a bind to get these projects done, so we're really, we're maximizing all our resources, so thank you all very much for your support.
Thank you, and thank you for the paddles, appreciate it. You'll see us out there one day.
Yes, and we'll see you, now you have to come to Escarate to charge your cars, so.
But not when it's 100 degrees outside.
Well, not.
We'll wait for it to cool down.
Not, it's already 93, you're going to have to put on a sweater.
It's beautiful now.
It's a cold front. Yeah. Going through a cold front.
It's beautiful.
Oh, thank you, appreciate it.
Keep planting trees, keep planting trees.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a great day.
You too.
What did you do to your rotator?
No, it was an assault, it was 10 against one, and I was part of the 10, and she was a tough lady.
We got one over here.
No, it's a, I had a surgery, but I'm doing good.
Thank you.
Item number four, receive a presentation from the Operations Department regarding the Communications Division policies, procedures, and guidelines.
Good morning, Commissioners. Melissa Carillo with County Operations. So this morning, we have a presentation regarding your communications policies and guidelines that we've really been working on for the past two years. And so anytime we create new divisions or departments, we really find it critical to take time to establish foundational policies and guidelines, to really help give us direction on what we want to do with this division, how do we want to provide service, and really how to better serve each of our customers within the county. So we've taken quite a bit of time working on these policies, we're hopeful that you are pleased with the result. Today, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Gallegos, she is our communications manager, she's been with the county for two years, and we're very fortunate to have her and her growing team. They are going to go over just a few slides, but they're going to cover quite a bit of information. We encourage you to ask questions for clarification, give us feedback, and any concern you might have, please share it with us at this time. As you all know, with policies, they're never final, this is the first batch, and we continue to amend to make sure that they do what they need to do. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Gallegos.
Hello, good morning, Commissioners. Laura Gallegos, your communications manager. Miguel, if you wouldn't mind switching the slide for me, that would be great. So good morning, as Melissa said, I onboarded to this position October 2021, and since then, we've been working on these foundational guidelines, policies, procedures, as well as a basic foundation for the entire program. Today, I'll be sharing a brief presentation regarding the policies our office will use to govern our work moving forward. The Communications Division is intended to support the work of the county of El Paso and county commissioners as a body. So we sent the copy of the draft policies to your office in advance of this meeting. However, I will be going over some of the provisions in more detail today, and again, we look forward to your feedback. First slide? Yes, thank you. The purpose of these policies and guidelines is to coordinate and manage the communications activities related to official county business. The policies will help ensure accuracy, consistency, and timeliness in relaying information to our departments, employees, citizens of El Paso, members of the media, and the public at large. These policies create clear communications procedures for various county stakeholders to follow when communicating county information to the public through various mediums such as the news media and social media. Next slide. The Communications Office is responsible for communication support of county departments that report to the chief administrator and on county-wide initiatives approved by the commissioner's court or in which consensus is received. Next slide. The media relations portion of the policies is the mediest part of the policies you'll see. The Communications Division creates and coordinates news releases and media advisories regarding commissioner's court initiatives, projects, and information that impacts the community. All news conferences are coordinated through the Communications Division as well as the order of individuals that speak. Regarding interview requests, the Communications Division assists with coordinating media interviews, and will rotate media interview requests related to countywide topics among the various members of the commissioner's court and department heads as necessary. However, nothing in our policies prevent elected officials from sending their own news releases, holding their own news conferences, or coordinating their own interviews with the media. Just to give you some examples of the things that we have under the Media Relations Policy section, we're suggesting that we're given two weeks' notice to coordinate any requests. We also do joint news releases, we work with external agencies and work with them to create joint news releases. We also coordinate all local media stations, commissioner's court and chief, oh, I'm sorry, this is the invitation part, all local media stations, commissioner's court and the chief administrator will be invited to these events. Depending on the project initiative, department heads with special or special interest groups and other members of the community, or other elected officials may also be invited. Another example is news events may be held on the same day as when the item is approved by commissioner's court, but only if the entire court gives consensus on that, because I know it's very difficult to hold a news conference right after you make a decision in commissioner's court, but I understand that sometimes that's going to be necessary, but that will be up to the court to decide that. Otherwise, we hope to give you enough time to coordinate your schedules to attend. The County Communications Division will coordinate with commissioner's court staff on the most ideal date to ensure there's as much participation as possible. Otherwise, those available are encouraged to attend. The focus will be on the county commissioner whose precinct is where the event is happening or the project is happening. We will try to accommodate that commissioner so that obviously you're able to attend your own event in your own precinct. Another example is the order in which people speak or elected officials speak during news conferences. Right now, the sequence is the county judge, followed by the member of the commissioner's court who oversees the precinct where the project initiative is occurring, and then remaining members of the commissioner's court based on seniority, with those who are most tenured speaking first. Elected officials may choose to send their own news releases, as I mentioned before, we coordinate joint news releases, I covered that. We also want to mention that there has been questions about sending out information about when you get an award or when you are appointed to a commission. For those employee accolades, the Communications Division will send news releases for state, regional, or national recognitions. Local recognitions of employees will be sent internally as a group every first and third week of the month when content is available, and that also includes elected officials, if you so wish. And then lastly, in the media portion, I just want to remind you that again, if you're contacted directly by the media, you're glad, you know, you can go ahead and handle it yourself or defer it to me, if in fact it is some kind of a countywide initiative, we'd be glad to help you with that. Okay, so, onto branding. The new brand guidelines will roll out this month, where county staff is invited to training sessions to learn more about these brand guidelines. It'll probably be the last week of the month and the first week of October that we'll be inviting employees to come, probably here in the courtroom and in other areas of the county, to hold these brand sessions, to show them, you know, what the guidelines are. We already have developed a webpage that looks really great, Oscar Wiggers has done a great job, and Desiree, of course, helping to put all of the information on there. The use of a uniform countywide brand helps to increase the public's awareness of the wide variety of services offered by the county. So we hope your staff will attend, and if not, we'd be glad to sit with them and review the guidelines with them. Then going on to social media, the Communications Division uses social media to promote county business. However, the office may consider promoting information from other community partners within the county of El Paso on matters of justice, public safety, community, economic development, veterans and military affairs, El Paso tourism, and other items which align with county strategic goals and legislative values. So for example, we try to monitor other communities within the county, their social media, so if we see something great on the Santa Luisario page, or the, let's say, the Ganutio ISD page, we'll try to share it on the county page, just to show that we kind of have that coverage over the entire county. The Communications Division is responsible for creating and monitoring applicable official county pages and social media accounts on approved sites to ensure appropriate use, messaging, and branding is consistent with the goals of the county. So when I first got here, we kind of had to rein in, you know, all of the social media pages that were out there. I think we have a pretty good directory of which departments have which social media pages, and that messaging is now a bit more under control. Our team will work with departments covered within this policy to create new official county department or program pages, and then thereafter, we're hoping that the Communications Office can just provide support to whatever social media administrator has been assigned under that department. And as a reminder to those listening, county social media administrators should tag @EPCounty within each post to help drive engagement within our community. So I've covered a lot so far, and I still have a couple more slides, but does anybody have any questions or feedback you want to talk about right now? Yes?
I've got a question. So Twitter's no longer Twitter, it's X, right? And there's another platform that a lot of people are using, it's called Threads, are we planning on having a Threads account as well?
We can look into that, certainly, Commissioner. To be honest, we've done a great job with Facebook and all of the more, you know, standard Instagram and Twitter accounts. We have not really done a great job with LinkedIn, which is something we're going to focus on this year, but we will definitely look into that fourth one called Thread.
Yeah, I think it's linked to Instagram, it's paired up with Instagram, so whatever you post on Instagram, I think it'll, you can have it post on Threads as well.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, then going on to our services. The Communications Division provides a variety of services that cover departments can use as they work on projects and programs to be communicated internally and externally. These services include external communications, photography, videography, web services, event coordination, emergency communications, and more. Our efforts focus on supporting departments by meeting with them and sharing their message and their great work. We're proud of the county's story, and we want to communicate this story with El Paso residents. We do try to meet with department heads regularly to see what their needs are for the month, they're usually monthly meetings, and then try to provide them any of these services that are needed, or sometimes, you know, we hear of an initiative going on and we'll reach out to them to let them know that we're here to support their efforts. My team, we've worked to bring in resources that already existed in other county departments and centralize them in the Communications Division. So the communication team consists of three units, our multimedia services team, our marketing team, and we have just added the web services team. So you're already familiar with many of them, and I'd like to introduce them. So Miguel Mendez, of course, we know behind the screens here, is the multimedia services supervisor, Alexis Ortiz, the multimedia specialist, and Desiree Gonzalez, our marketing coordinator, are actually in my office working on a video project that's due today. So I'm sorry that they're not here. Oscar Wiggers is the web administration supervisor, and there is an additional web services designer that is in the process of being hired.
Those are all positions that existed, we've just now grouped them all together in the marketing communications area.
Yes. Yeah, so it's a great team, we all work really well together, and even though I didn't have the chance to actually hire Miguel, Alexis, and Desiree, I had truly been blessed with an amazing team, so it's very exciting. Not only do we have a few active strategic goals to help support the county with further engagement in the community, but we hear the court's passion and desire to seek our community's input and ensure we continue communicating our amazing stories to them. We're already working on great things and cannot wait to continue supporting the court's efforts, our chief administrator, and the county family. And that is the conclusion of my presentation, and I'd be glad to open it up to questions.
I've got a question. On the vacancies for the marketing coordinators, what's the timeline? Are we close to hiring folks, or?
Yes, yes, so yesterday, Melissa and I interviewed the last three finalists, and we will likely be making a decision by the end of the week.
I've got a question, Dr. Gallegos. If you can go back to the branding logo, there's two, and do we use them both, or have we settled on just one?
Right, well, so as you know, we try to save money, so a lot of times, we can't print on colored paper, and so we have a black and white version for you to use, then we have the colored version, and I believe there's like a transparent version that you can use. So yes, I mean, as long as it follows the seals that you'll actually see in the branding guidelines booklet, or the digital booklet, I should say, then we're good.
So all our vehicles are with the gold leaf, and just the printing is where we have a problem when it's just black and white? Okay.
Yes, so it's your choice. I think there's three or four different versions.
Okay, well, thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome. Glad to be here, thank you.
I have one more question, Doctor. The, I think, I can't remember if it was on the slide, or I heard you say something about a social media directory? Is that, where is that, where can we find that? Is it on the website?
It's not on the website, but I'd be glad to provide you all of the pages that are active right now in the county, yes.
Commissioners, I just wanted to chime in on something regarding branding. So you recall that over the years, we've worked with you, we've sought your feedback when we developed this brand. Oscar has done an amazing job, and we're getting ready to roll out the website so that your teams and all the county employees can see what the color guidelines look like, what the logos, the seals, things like that. But this is literally phase one in branding. When we think of where we want to go with branding in the future, it does address things, Commissioner, like you just mentioned, how do we unify all vehicles, how do we unify etching on doors, how do we make sure that placards for departments look the same? So we're in step one of branding, but we have great ideas, and we'll continue to bring them to you all for direction and support before we move on into multiple phases.
And by the way, that new pin that came, I don't know where it came from, but that, I really liked that one. It's a smaller version of that giant one.
Yes, sir.
That we had in the past.
The ones you guys got Monday?
Yeah.
I think they were on the Diaz Monday.
Magnetic ones?
Yes, yeah, thank you.
And there's two kinds, there's that one, and there's the Enrique Moreno courthouse.
That one's very nice.
Yes, sir, those are, those are new ones that we. Those are new ones that we recently got for you all, ordered for you all to have.
One more question, I'm sorry. In the policy itself, there's a section, I think on page three, that talks about the branding. And it talks about restricting the words and seals, logos from used by private businesses. Is that legally enforceable?
Can you ask the question?
Or practically enforceable? I don't know. I mean, so there's a section within the policy, the written policy itself, on page three, in the branding section, that talks about restricting the use of words, seals, and logos from used by private business purposes without written consent of the county. I'm just wondering, like, question, I guess, to legal?
Right, that's really.
Legal or practically enforceable?
I see what you're saying, right. Because our county seal is not like private.
Right.
It is intellectual property, though, so Anna Schumacher, Assistant County Attorney. So it is our intellectual property, so we have rights to it. So we could, if someone said something, issue like a cease and desist if it was being used wrongfully. But I'll turn it over to, I don't know if Erica or Allison Maglioni, who reviewed the policy more recently, would like to add anything on this item, or if she's on.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Ms. Schumacher covered it exactly right. That's exactly what I was going to say as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
And we, yeah, and we wouldn't, you know, we're not policing anything, but we certainly don't want the seal being used on something that we don't advocate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll need a break, please?
I'm good, I'm good.
So am I.
If you need one, we can take one.
No, no, so far, so good.
Commissioner, I do believe that Judge San Diego and Commissioner Coronado should be here shortly. Do you all want to take a five-minute recess so I can get some estimates on their arrival?
Sure, let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break and give them a little extra time.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners' Court will recess for 10 minutes. It is 10:23 a.m.
This is oral medication, is a new one. So once you get home, you can go ahead and get it.
Fantastic.
Is that it for?
So every Wednesday, we host a free clinic for the community, for our county constituents. We offer free spay and neuter surgeries, free age-appropriate vaccinations, and free microchips. We start our clinic at 6:00 a.m., all the way to 2:00 p.m. Our intake, we usually take in pets up to two years currently. This is right now tentatively until our new clinic is open, hopefully by October.
Say hello, everybody.
We've been doing it since about 2020. It's been super successful with our community members bringing in their pets to get spayed and neutered. A lot of the people don't have the resources to be able to pay for a space surgery, a neuter surgery. Sometimes it's upwards of $500. So we're very glad to be able to offer that for free here. Just shoot us an email at spayneuter@epcounty.com, and with the services you need, your information, and the services that your pets need, and we'll get you on our servicing list.
There we go. We got it, we got it.
Today, I was told by my wife that a friend of hers told her that their dogs just got vaccinated for free. So for her dogs, they were never vaccinated from birth. So I was like, you know what, let's go do it. They never got their shots, we weren't able to have the money to get it. So we heard about the free service, so we were like, let's go ahead and see how it goes and see how the dogs do, and they did pretty well for their first time. It is very important, because I know with some dogs or some families that can't get vaccinated, pets, they end up passing away in a short time. Due to the fact that I was able to get my dogs to get the service, I'm really glad and happy about it.
In a few months, we're going to have a brand-new clinic on the Horizon Sparks area. And we're going to be able to do a lot more surgeries and vaccinations. So it's going to have a big impact on the citizens and the pets of the county. We're going to do a lot of surgeries, but also it's going to be a training facility for the new doctors and also for students. Because nowadays, they don't get a lot of hands-on practice on the veterinary schools. We're bringing students from Juarez to train and also to learn. And if they're interested in getting licensed here in the U.S., we're helping them. Hopefully, we'll have a lot of new doctors in the near future.
Our official name is Illumina Public Library, El Paso County's all-digital library. The reason that it's named Illumina is because libraries illuminate. They bring to light information. We have eBooks, audiobooks, magazines, a streaming service to watch movies and to listen to music.
What are we trying to do? We're trying to see the, what are total remaining?
We have programming here at the Aguadulce Community Center. We have computer literacy classes, conversational English classes.
B2, so it's B3.
And we recently started going over the Microsoft suite, so Microsoft Word. Today, I did Microsoft Excel.
You speak.
You speak.
Do you speak?
You speak. So she checks out a tablet, and she checks out a hotspot to use at home for herself and for her kids.
We also have a lot of people using the services from home. At first, it was a little bit difficult to explain the concept that it's an all-digital library.
But yeah, people are understanding. This is the future, this is necessary if you want to continue to stay relevant.
The hotspot and the tablet is to help bridge that gap and to give all of the folks out here access to internet.
And it's going to be one of those accessible things that makes the entire county more equitable. And of course, it allows people to be participating in things they might have not been able to do so prior to this new initiative.
This is our website, and right here on the front, it says, click here to sign up for a live recard.
So it's free to everybody who lives in El Paso County, regardless if you live in the city or not.
We're very thankful to Moms On Board, a nonprofit organization that had a vision to help the county create more all-inclusive, all-abilities playgrounds. But the county took it a step further and decided to apply for a grant from Texas Parks and Wildlife Department to build three all-abilities playgrounds. One in Callejos Park in Canutillo. The other one at Risinger Park in Favens. So Azcarate will be the largest all-abilities playground in the county. It'll be almost an acre of play space.
There's a lot of really neat amenities here at this park. For example, the merry-go-round that allows people in wheelchairs to also be inside the merry-go-round. And then we also have the swing, the parent with the child that can swing together. We also have something for anyone who is, has any type of sensory disability. We also have panels out there for them to play on.
I think that is fantastic, because the more kids get to be together with kids with disabilities, they learn to be nicer to each other, they learn to be kinder to each other, and that's what our world needs.
A child that doesn't have disabilities, helping a child that does have disabilities, that's very powerful. This is, at an early age, they learn to have empathy and be able to understand other children.
So for example, there are ramps, so that if a grandparent or a parent is in a wheelchair, they'll be able to come up to all of the equipment and be able to still be there next to their child. This is a very special park. It's not in very many parks, even within the city of El Paso. So we're incredibly proud that the county was able to bring these all-abilities parks to some of the outer county areas. And that just goes to show what a priority it is for the county to make sure that all of our county residents, regardless in what part of the county they live in, have access to the same services and benefits.
So the First Friday Tours of Mission Valley are a program that the county came up with in partnership with Visit El Paso to bring both locals and out-of-towners from all walks of life here to our three amazing, beautiful communities of Isleta, San Elisario, and Socorro.
So the tour of the mission trail is a really, really nice tour, because it shows you things that a lot of people don't know, even people from El Paso.
Although we were established in 1680, our first pueblos were established 343 years ago.
We were very fortunate to receive a tour at the Socorro Mission from Ms. Magda Maurera. We also were fortunate to visit with the social dancers at our Tigua Pueblo.
You get taken on stops all throughout the mission trail. You get to really see a little bit of everything.
Germania with chamoy and tahin, you know, which is a common flavor here in this area. And paired up with our pomegranate beer, it brings a lot of local flavors together in one glass. I believe that a lot of people don't know about this area, and they don't know what they're missing out on. A lot of our roots, the foundation, the way we speak, the languages that are here, the food that we eat, a lot of it was born in this area.
We actually get people from all over the country and even from other parts of the world that come to visit our missions. This year, for 2023, the mission trail was actually named the number-one historic site in Texas by the Texas Travel Awards, which is a great recognition and really goes to show just what a treasure we have here in the Mission Valley.
Well, there's something for everyone. There's art galleries, there's local foods, local eateries, local breweries. It's family-friendly, or if you're taking a date out on, for a fun First Friday evening, everyone is likely to find something that they'll enjoy.
The Honorable Robert J. Galván County Law Library is a public legal research facility that county residents can use in order to facilitate access to legal information and enhance the administration of justice. As part of the county's domestic relations office and El Paso County Private Bar Association, the Law Library's access to justice commitment is made through an availability of extensive collection of legal resources, access to technology, and availability of important legal forms and other resources. With a connection to the past, delivering present services and envisioning the future, the Law Library is a unique county resource.
Knowledge and information is power. Everyone has the right to arm themselves with information, accurate, current, freely accessible information, which you will find here.
Established in 1950, the Law Library grew from the Texas's Eighth District Court of Appeals' collection of case law and practice materials. The Eighth Court of Appeals, which is located next to the Law Library on the 12th floor of the Enrique Moreno El Paso County Courthouse, still shares custody of the collection and continues to update several resources. The Law Library was named after Law Library Committee Chairman Judge Robert J. Galván in 2004. The Law Library ensures that our legal practitioners can provide exceptional representation to their clients and is a resource for all county citizens to access justice.
But self-representation became something to where people actually couldn't afford an attorney. And it gave them an opportunity to go and look up things for the benefit of their case. And I'm talking anywhere from municipal court tickets, speeding tickets, JP tickets, landlord tenant issues, to cases that were in our county courts and district courts.
We have built our collection and curate the resources so that they can be successful in accomplishing what they need to do within the court system.
The two-floor library facility has a comprehensive collection of print and electronic resources covering federal, regional, state, and local jurisdictions, conference rooms to accommodate attorneys and their clients, or for meeting space. There are computers with webcam capabilities and private study rooms. Printing copying services are available to the public for a fee. There is also technology on hand to scan and fax documents.
This is an access-to-justice initiative. This is so imperative to those many hundreds of thousands who live in El Paso, because without that, without their ability to have access to information, access to books, access to computers, access to be able to use the justice system, they're left out in the cold.
The Law Library is a great location to access important legal resources to include published cases, forms, court rules, practice guides, plus historical legal books not available digitally, while guided by experienced staff.
We're open, we have the computers that you can use, we have printers.
Law Library staff performs outreach in order to help ensure the most vulnerable in our community is aware of the services offered. The Law Library staff is also key in providing the public in-person information on the history of the county courthouse by providing guided tours to the public.
You can see she's not blindfolded, and throughout history, there have been times where she was blindfolded.
The Law Library is open from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. weekdays. For more information, call 915-546-2245, or email eplawlibrary@epcounty.com.
You will find the library to be a welcoming and judgment-free place, where you will be met with dignity, respect, and discretion.
The Robert J. Galván County Law Library is committed to facilitate access to legal information for the citizens of El Paso County.
It's important for your children to say "Karen" on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm Karen, and all my vaccines, and I also get the COVID vaccine, so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit ephealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de la vacuna rutina, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19.
La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis. Para las vacunas rutinas de sus hijos, visite ephealth.com.
Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos, así que recuerda, no lo dudes.
Go ahead. Commissioners' Court has reconvened into special open session. It is 10:41 a.m. We are on item number five. Receive a presentation regarding the ongoing development of the El Paso County Major Capital Plan, including but not limited to project selections, performance objectives and outcomes, performance management, operational management, and corresponding financial planning and direction to county staff and consultants.
Yes, the commissioners here would really like for all the commissioners and the judge to be here. So we think in the best interest of a decision of this magnitude that we postpone. So we'll just postpone it for one week? Or did we say Monday?
For Monday, please, sir.
Okay, is there enough time to post?
We can actually take no action. I'll just roll the item over. It's a different, it'll be a different posting. But you can do that.
Are you all okay with it? Okay. Yep, we'll take no action.
No action on item number five. That completes all the items on the agenda, Commissioner.
We're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, appreciate you.
Thank you.
This concludes today's meeting at 10:42 a.m.
Betty, before we go downstairs, did you all agree?
We did not.